Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna go and get started. Roll call. Mr. Nolan.
Yes, yes.
Bobby Kay. Mr. Krasinski.
Present.
Mr. Pyle. Mr. Pyle. Ms. Hess.
Here.
Mr. Deloyan.
Here.
Mr. Katanzirai.
Here.
Mr. Kenner Ricky.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Root. Mr. Root.
Dick was here.
It looks like he's muted.
So, everybody's here, but. Mike Hammond. Mr. Hammond.
I'm here.
Mr. Murphy.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
All right. Mr. Triple.
I am here.
Okay. All right, the special virtual meeting of the San Joe County Council, June ninth, twenty twenty, now called to order. Uh, let's, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I. Pledge allegiance. Okay, um, we have some appointments this evening. Um. First appointment, reappointment, I'm sorry, would be Raphael Morton and John Ferretti to the Early Intervention Board. Do I hear of any other suggestions? Any nominations for that reappointment?
Motion to nominate Raphael Morton.
Pardon? I'm sorry.
Motion to nominate Raphael Morton, Mr. Ferretti, to the Early Intervention Board.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other nominations at this time? Hearing none. Uh, Raphael Morton and John Ferretti are reappointed to the Early Intervention Board. Um, next one is, reappointment would be Anthony Douglas, James Foster, Phil Buckmaster, William DeLuca, Thomas England, and Barbara Sanchez to the Saint Joseph County Housing Authority. Are you motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Uh, Anthony Douglas, James Foster, Phil Buckmaster, William DeLuca, Thomas England, and Barbara Sanchez are reappointed to the Saint Joe County Housing Authority. Um, the next one is a reappointment of Mr. Mark Root to the MACOG Policy Board. Are you motion?
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, there is a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Mark Root to the MACOG Policy Board. Any other nominations at this time? Hearing none. Mr. Root is reappointed to the MACOG Policy, Policy Board. Okay, now, the last one is Belinda Gillespie to be reappointed to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Um, I had a conversation with Rosemary Mandriči today because there, there has obviously been some ongoing concerns about qualifications of different, not just with Belinda, but with different board members. So, I, I actually asked her to put something in writing, in writing, so I could share this with all council members this evening. So, she wrote back. Dear Council, dear Councilman Morton, enclosed below is the statute for the County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals, PETA BOA. Saint Joe County elected to have a five-member board. The county assessor serves as secretary and is a non-voting member. I understand the council is, is considering the reappointment of Belinda Gillespie as a member of PETA BOA. Ms. Gillespie was a former office manager in the county auditor's office for many years and has served this county well as a freehold member of the, of the board. The other members of the board are Kathy Kindler, Indiana Level Three Assessor slash Appraiser and former, and former judge with the Indiana Board of Tax Review. Don Chefmeyer, a commercial appraiser, real estate developer, businessman, and former banker. Michael Rans, an Indiana, Indiana real estate broker, Indiana Level One Assessor slash Appraiser, and is presently going for his Level Two as soon as the DLGF allows. And Pete Mullen, former county auditor and businessman. This board, this board has a wealth of real estate knowledge and is reflective of the community that we serve. If you need any additional information, please contact me. So, my understanding and talking to her that the people that I just referred to within the five-member board, uh, she is following the guidelines of the members who, or at least has enough members that have to have this Level Three and Level Two as far as assessors. So, because of the concerns, I wanted to make sure that you heard it from her, and she explained that, uh, who's, who's who on the board and which ones have the Level Two or Three uh, assessor qualifications, and according to Ms. Mandriči, uh, the board is made up of enough people who have those qualifications to qualify, uh, and be okay as far as the state's concerned. Any comments on that, on what I just read to you and shared with you? Hello?
Yeah.
Any comments or, or thoughts, or after hearing that information?
Just the numbers, Raphael, does she, are you indicating that she has enough members as it stands right now with the proper level of certifications?
Correct, correct. Now, that, that, basically, Mark, that's why I have her put it in writing because when I talked to her today, that was my main reason for calling her to let her know that there was concern, there were concerns that if enough members, as the board is made up now, have the proper qualifications that are needed. So, unless I misunderstood it, which I don't think I did, that's what she was saying, that because, well, I guess what she's also saying is, according to the state statute, each member does not have to have those assessor, the different level qualifications, but uh, I assume, I'm, I'm saying, what she's saying, the three that do, that suffices as far as what the state says that she has to have.
Can you, can you quickly run through those names? I, I heard Pete Mullen. Mr. Mr. Rans, right?
Okay, the, okay, hold on. Okay, we were looking at Belinda, Belinda Gillespie, who is up for reappointment. The other members of the board are Patty Kindler, Indiana Level Three.
Right.
Assessor slash Appraiser who took over for Ann Connors.
Right.
And former judge, the Indiana Board of Tax Review.
Right.
Patty Kindler. Don Chef, Don Chefmeyer. A commercial appraiser and real estate developer, businessman, and former banker. Michael Rans.
Right.
Michael Rans, an Indiana real estate broker, Indiana Level One Assessor, Appraiser, and is, is currently going for his Level Two as soon as the DLGF allows. And Pete Mullen, former county auditor and businessman.
Right.
Now. I wanted to make sure that I got that information straight from her because of the concerns that were expressed.
Is, is she considered the fifth member, even though it's a, she's, she's a non-voting member? Is she the fifth member?
No, no, she's not the fifth member, no.
Okay.
No, she serves as the sec, you're talking about Rosemary?
Right.
No, she, no, she said in the letter, she's the secretary and she's a non-voting member.
Okay.
The county assessor serves as secretary and is a non-voting member.
Yeah, well, I do know of Belinda Gillespie. I, I, I recall when she worked in the auditor's office, and she was a phenomenal county employee. That's my testament to her. Do you need a nomination on Belinda?
Yes, I mean, I mean, hey, if we don't want to do it tonight, I'm not rushing it. I'm, I responded and wanted to talk to Rosemary and get her point of view and report that back to the full council because of the concerns. And I asked her to break it down with each member's qualifications, and I asked her to put it in writing instead of me just trying to talk to you guys with it secondhand. And she said she'd be glad to do it, and this is exactly what she wrote.
Yeah, I like Belinda because of her experience in the auditor's office, in many years in county government. And, um, she brings diversity both as a woman and as an actor and a member of the, and to the board. I like that, but that, that's my recommendation. I, I would nominate Belinda Gillespie.
Any other comments, uh, you know, about this situation? Uh, like I said, you know, I'm not saying that we have to appoint her tonight. I just responded to the concerns that I was made aware of.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor to reappoint Belinda Gillespie to the PETA BOA Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Opposed? Belinda Gillespie is reappointed to, Belinda Gillespie is reappointed to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Thank you very much. All right, okay, next on the agenda, first readings.
Mr. Morton.
Please read Bill Number Twenty-Five Twenty.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Could, could I momentarily deviate from the agenda and ask a favor?
Yes.
Could, could I ask, um, given that today is the day, and no matter where you stand on the issue, I would think we're united on the issue as a country, but given the fact that they had a memorial service and burial for George Floyd today, we exercise a small moment of silence, silence for George Floyd.
Is everybody fine with that?
Are you, do you guys mind doing that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark.
No problem, Raphael.
Okay, next on the agenda, our first readings. Clark, will you please read Bill Number Twenty-Five Twenty?
Mr. President. Corey, what? Mr. President.
What? I couldn't, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear a thing.
Hey, you want to do the minutes? Didn't approve the minutes from the last two meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, sir, sorry about that.
On the agenda.
Yeah, ma'am, motion to approve the minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty, and May twelfth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved from April fourteenth, twenty twenty, and May twelfth, twenty twenty. Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Clark, will you please read Bill Number Twenty-Five Twenty under first readings?
In ordinance amendment and supplementing Title Fifteen Land Use, Chapter One Fifty-four Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at one-two-six-six-one and one-two-six-four on the Kennedy Highway, um, our single-family residential to I Industrial District to C Commercial Petitioners, Penn Civil Township and Penn Harris Madison School Corporation.
Bill Number Twenty-Five Twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill Thirty-three Twenty in ordinance amending and supplementing Title Fifteen Land Use, Chapter One Fifty-four Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at three-one-zero-zero-zero Gilmore Road from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioners Todd Kaminsky, Jill Edis, and Tim V. Kaminsky.
Bill Number Thirty-three Twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill Thirty-four Twenty in ordinance amending and supplementing Title Fifteen Land Use, Chapter One Fifty-four Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at three-zero-seven-five-zero Edison Road, three-one-zero-zero-zero Early Road, three-one-zero-zero-zero State Road Two and three-zero-seven-five-zero State Road Two from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioners Kenneth Sebastian Junior, Kenneth Sebastian Senior, and Elaine A. Sebastian.
Bill Number Thirty-four Twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill Thirty-five Twenty, um, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title Fifteen Land Use, Chapter One Fifty-four Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at one-four-three-zero-four State Road Twenty-three from our single-family residential to O Office District, petitioner, Miss Paul Properties.
Bill Number Thirty-five Twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
The Forty-eight Twenty in ordinance to vacate, uh, public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of Sancho County, public highway or public place, petitioner, Little Flower Ventures LLC.
Bill Number Forty-eight Twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Well, in twenty-nine Twenty, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title Fifteen Land Use, Chapter One Fifty-four Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at uh, vacant land in the southwest quadrant of Larison Boulevard and Edison Road from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioners Kimberly Phillips and Powering Waters.
Bill Number Forty-nine Twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
In ordinance amending and supplementing Title, this is Bill Fifty-Twenty, excuse me. Uh, in ordinance amending and supplementing Title Fifteen Land Use, Chapter One Fifty-four Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at one-four-three-zero-four State Road Twenty-three from, uh, uh, our single-family district to C Commercial District, uh, petitioner, GFE Enterprises LLC.
Bill Number Fifty dash Twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next, public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All fiscal issues were heard and discussed at our May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clark, will you please read Bill Number Four, Forty-seven Twenty?
In ordinance appropriating and transferring money for the purposes herein specified by the several departments here enlisted of the Sancho County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill Number Forty-seven Twenty?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill Number Twenty, Forty-seven Twenty was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on Forty-seven Twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Pyle? Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Deloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirai?
Yes.
Mr. Kenner Ricky?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Thank you, let the record, let the record show that Bill Number Forty-seven Twenty was passed by a vote of eight to zero. Next to the land use is Bill Number Twenty-two Twenty. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Yeah, uh, in order to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of Sancho County, public way or public place located at a portion of Marquette Boulevard, petitioner, Sancho County Airport.
There, is there a report? I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Nolan, committee report?
Mr. Morton, Bill Number Twenty-two dash Twenty goes to the whole council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a report for area plan?
Uh, yes, there is. Sean Klein with Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Um, all the properties that have bought this portion of Marquette Boulevard are owned by the airport. It does not provide access to any other parcels, and it does not connect to any other streets. As such, this vacation has the full support of the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, and I believe that there is a representative of the petitioner here to speak on its behalf.
Thank you, sir. Petitioner?
Good evening, councilor, council members. My name is Tim LaMolla, vice president of operations for the airport authority. Um, as you know, we're, uh, asking for the recreation of the road in order, uh, to accommodate a, uh, a detention pond as part of a, a large uh, infrastructure project. We're doing it on the airfield. Um, pending any questions, I'd be happy to answer, um, while I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on Bill Twenty-two Twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on Bill Twenty-two Twenty?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass Bill Number Twenty-two Twenty was made by Councilman Katanzirai. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on Twenty-two Twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yeah, I was, I was muted, man, I'm sorry. Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Deloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirai?
Yes.
Mr. Kenner Ricky?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Did, did you call for Mr. Pyle?
I don't think so.
I did not call Mr. Pyle because he didn't answer the question.
Mr. Mr. Pyle?
Mr. Pyle.
We can't hear you.
Yeah, so he didn't.
Is, is Sean?
I'm on my phone, can you? Can you, is, is he on the video screen? I'm not, I'm on a phone.
Yes, he's on the video. He's, he's muted. I'm mute, I'm mute, Mr. Pyle.
Dick, can you at least give a thumbs up? Are you for this? Make him tell me.
Yeah, 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 thumbs up.
Good, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ms. Hess again?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes. Thumbs up, baby.
Good, carries nine-zero.
Let the record show, thank you. Let the record show that Twenty-two Twenty, Bill Twenty-two Twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number Twenty-three Twenty.
In ordinance of Sancho County Council amending Title Seven Traffic Code by, in Chapter Seventy-three, Truck Regulations Establishing Section Seventy-three Point Four Oversized Overweight Regulations, Petitioner Infrastructure Planning Growth.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. Morton, Bill Number Twenty-three dash Twenty comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir. I'm, petitioner? Petitioner?
Yes, this is Jessica Clark, county engineer with Saint Joseph County Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth on the seventh and eleventh floors of the county city building. Before you tonight is an ordinance amendment to establish an oversized overweight regulation section in the code and implement a new permit for oversized and/or overweight vehicles traveling on our county roads. We recommend establishing this permit to facilitate the necessary transportation of these loads in a safe and responsible manner throughout our community. We currently perform this analysis at no cost. However, we do incur costs for performing this review and request to initiate a fee to cover our effort. Further, many of these requests require consultant review for loading conditions on a bridge, which is another cost of the county. This ordinance will establish the permit fee, additional fees for consultant review, and fines for noncompliance. The permit form itself will be available online and on our website as an online fillable form. Thank you for your consideration, and we recommend your approval of the amendment.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing on Bill Twenty-three Twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Twenty-three Twenty. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, go. Motion to pass Bill Number Twenty-three Twenty was made by Councilwoman Hess, and it was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on Twenty-three Twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Pyle?
That's a yes.
Give a thumbs up, or?
Thumbs up, yes.
Yes.
Thumbs up, baby. I think that's a thumb, not a.
Thank you.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
God, Mr. Deloyan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Katanzirai?
Yes.
Mr. Kenner Ricky?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number Twenty-three Twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Forty-six Twenty, in ordinance adopting an, uh, an amendment to Section Three dot one-six of the Sancho County, Indiana, Twenty-Thirteen Human Resources Policies and Benefits Manual, including language, allowing continuation of pay for employees willing but unable to work during the reopening period for county work facilities previously closed due to emergency. Petitioners, commissioners.
A committee report, please, on Forty-six Twenty? I think it should have been on the budget, in the budget administration.
Okay, then, Bill Number Forty-six Twenty comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
President Morton, esteemed members of council, Councilman Root. Um, this is, though, I think you're somewhat familiar with. Uh, we discussed it at your last meeting, that committee meeting as well. This is just to kind of, uh, to clean up, uh, the position of, we wanted to continue to pay our employees who were unable to come and work from home, and then also, we did not want them in the county city building at that point. This just cleans up. Um, the Board of Commissioners passed this at our meeting about two and a half or three weeks ago. We're asking council to do the same thing here. Also, Pete Augustino is here, if you have any questions of a more legal nature.
Any questions are, or we, we, would anyone like to hear from Mr. Augustino? Any other questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open public hearing on Bill Forty-six Twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of Forty-six Twenty? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on Forty-six Twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Second.
A motion to pass Bill Number Forty-six Twenty was made by Councilman Kenner Ricky. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member in regards to Forty-six Twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Deloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirai?
Yes.
Kenner Ricky?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Yes. Thumbs up.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine-zero.
Let the record show that bill number forty-six-twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes public hearings for this evening. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next on the agenda is new business. Next on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.